All righty, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting to order at seven o'clock PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bond Crooks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kibowatton.
Present.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Prueji.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Coram, present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have is minute approval of the January 22 regular meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. We've got now public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment, we've got reserved exclusively for items that are on today's agenda, and we'll have another opportunity for public comment at the close of the meeting. We'll go to anyone in person first, and those on the Zoom. Let's see, anyone right now? All right, we'll move right on along there. Next up, under appointments, asking for this body's approval of my appointment to, of Faith Norwood to the Cultural Commission for a term expiring February 1, 2027.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Kibowatton.
Yes.
Hornbeck.
Yes.
Prueji.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Coram, present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have is minute approval of the January 22 regular meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. We've got now public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment, we've got reserved exclusively for items that are on today's agenda, and we'll have another opportunity for public comment at the close of the meeting. We'll go to anyone in person first, and those on the Zoom. Let's see, anyone right now? All right, we'll move right on along there. Next up, under appointments, asking for this body's approval of my appointment to, of Faith Norwood to the Cultural Commission for a term expiring February 1, 2027.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Kibowatton.
Yes.
Hornbeck.
Yes.
Prueji.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rezepa.
Here.
Coram, present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have is minute approval of the January 22 regular meeting.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. We've got now public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment, we've got reserved exclusively for items that are on today's agenda, and we'll have another opportunity for public comment at the close of the meeting. We'll go to anyone in person first, and those on the Zoom. Let's see, anyone right now? All right, we'll move right on along there. Next up, under appointments, asking for this body's approval of my appointment to, of Faith Norwood to the Cultural Commission for a term expiring February 1, 2027.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Kibowatton.
Yes.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Prueji.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Coram, present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have is minute approval of the January 22 regular meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. We've got now public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment, we've got reserved exclusively for items that are on today's agenda, and we'll have another opportunity for public comment at the close of the meeting. We'll go to anyone in person first, and those on the Zoom. Let's see, anyone right now? All right, we'll move right on along there. Next up, under appointments, asking for this body's approval of my appointment to, of Faith Norwood to the Cultural Commission for a term expiring February 1, 2027.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Kibowatton.
Yes.
Hornbeck.
Yes.
Prueji.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rezepa.
Abstain.
Bond Crooks.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all for the concurrence. Next up, we have, and we can probably do these all together, three resignation letters from various commissions. We have Katie Mans from the DDA, Brennan Gallagher from the Cultural Commission, and Nick Torinsky from the Cultural Commission. If we could get a motion to receive and place these on file.
So moved.
And then send each of these members a letter of thanks for their services. So moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next, we have the 33rd District Court fines, costs, and fees. I will turn it over to our court delegate, Councilwoman Bond Crooks.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to receive and place on file the costs, fines, and fees from the 33rd District Court due to the city in the amount of $2,223.32.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Hmm.
All right, Department Hudson officials. First up, we have here an item from our city administrator for the 2024 Concrete Pavement Repair Program contract extension. Mr. Creach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, you'll, you have the city engineer's recommendation to extend the contract with Dominic Gagliol construction for the 2024 season. So I'm asking to move to approve the extend, extend the, extend the contract Dominic Gagliol construction. This is really rough for me today, for 2024 Concrete Pavement Repair Program in the best interest of the city.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean.
Yes, sir.
All right, we've got three items now from our city attorney. All three petitions to divide property. The first one we have here, petition to divide property 3001 Marion Road Faith Bible Presbyterian Church. Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you. This petition to divide the property is for the church to sell a small portion of its property to a residential neighbor, which will help both. The common address of the property is 3001 Marion Road, Trenton 48183, and parcel ID is 5402199004-0000. And the split and all information is attached to the resolution that's before you, the petition before you. I'd ask you to pass that resolution 2024-2.
I would so move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And next up, we'll keep it with you, Mr. Ackerman here. Same petition to combine property 4005 Ponderosa, Jeffrey A. Hulicki.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. This has Exhibit A is incorporated into the resolution 2024-3, parcel 540180122-000 at 4005 Ponderosa. And what this is going to do is providing a neighboring residential property purchases additional land for a larger rear yard. And I ask the, I would have you ask the council for approval.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And lastly, we have the petition to combine property 2610 Vreeland. Mr. Jake Nemeth.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is 2024-4 to combine property by the petitioner. The parcels are 54-02601, 0027303, and 5402601, 0028304. And this is subject to any, of course, subject to any partake, and everything of record is all others. And this is a simple, this is a simple petition to incorporate, to combine the two properties for this rear yard, larger rear yard.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, Department Hudson officials. First up, we have here an item from our city administrator for the 2024 Concrete Pavement Repair Program contract extension. Mr. Creach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, you'll, you have the city engineer's recommendation to extend the contract with Dominic Gagliol construction for the 2024 season. So I'm asking to move to approve the extend, extend the, extend the contract Dominic Gagliol construction. This is really rough for me today, for 2024 Concrete Pavement Repair Program in the best interest of the city.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean.
Yes, sir.
All right, we've got three items now from our city attorney. All three petitions to divide property. The first one we have here, petition to divide property 3001 Marion Road Faith Bible Presbyterian Church. Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you. This petition to divide the property is for the church to sell a small portion of its property to a residential neighbor, which will help both. The common address of the property is 3001 Marion Road, Trenton 48183, and parcel ID is 5402199004-0000. And the split and all information is attached to the resolution that's before you, the petition before you. I'd ask you to pass that resolution 2024-2.
I would so move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And next up, we'll keep it with you, Mr. Ackerman here. Same petition to combine property 4005 Ponderosa, Jeffrey A. Hulicki.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. This has Exhibit A is incorporated into the resolution 2024-3, parcel 540180122-000 at 4005 Ponderosa. And what this is going to do is providing a neighboring residential property purchases additional land for a larger rear yard. And I ask the, I would have you ask the council for approval.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And lastly, we have the petition to combine property 2610 Vreeland. Mr. Jake Nemeth.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is 2024-4 to combine property by the petitioner. The parcels are 54-02601, 0027303, and 5402601, 0028304. And this is subject to any, of course, subject to any partake, and everything of record is all others. And this is a simple, this is a simple petition to incorporate, to combine the two properties for this rear yard, larger rear yard.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have from our city clerk, Ms. Devitt, as an item for election worker compensation.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the city charter per Section 3.12, page 12, compensation of the election personnel shall be determined in advance by council. I am requesting council approval to increase the wages of our election personnel as follows. Early voting inspectors to $150 per day, chairpersons to $250 per day, election day inspectors at $200 a day. Receiving board are paid an hourly rate of $20 per day, and if needed, beyond these wages, $15 per hour if I needed any election workers to work at an hourly rate.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, next up, from our controller, Ms. Cooper, authorization to sell old printers and copiers.
Hi, good evening. American Office Solutions recently replaced all the printers and copiers throughout our city buildings. They wiped the hard drives and brought them all back to City Hall. So now we are just looking to list these printers for sale. So I am looking for a motion to approve the sale of 55 printers and copiers using public, public surplus auctions.
So support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Prueji.
Yes, you say they wiped the hard drives on all the printers?
Yes.
Okay, I just making sure that there wasn't any data left on the copiers and printers. And then I'm, I didn't realize they had hard drives, but I'm just making sure that's happened, and according to you, it has.
Yep, they said that it has been completed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right, next up, from our DPS director, Mr. Sargent, request to purchase a water department service truck.
Thanks, Mayor. Our water and sewer department utilize two service trucks in the fleet. In the event we have multiple water main breaks or other related jobs, we can dispatch two crews at one time. These service trucks carry all necessary tools and equipment required to make the repairs in the field. One of our service trucks is 17 years old and has been unreliable and needs to be replaced. Our fleet supervisor obtained two, a two-part quote utilizing Gornell Ford's MyDeal contract. The chassis will be purchased through Gornell Ford, while the service body will be supplied and installed by Naphide. If approved, it'll take one year to take delivery, at which time the old truck would be sold at auction. Therefore, I'm seeking approval to purchase the water department service truck from Gornell Ford and Naphide in a total amount of $89,938.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Kevin, next up, we have settlement agreement between the Great Lakes Water Authority and City of Trenton.
On March 7, 2023, we experienced a water main break on a 16-inch water main just south of Sibley Road. This water main is owned by GLWA but is downstream of the city's master meter. Our master meter captured all this excess water usage, so I submitted a claim for reimbursement. After months of back and forth, GLWA has provided a settlement agreement in the amount of $11,684.49, which represents 10.3 million gallons of water lost. In order to proceed with the settlement agreement, GLWA has requested a resolution to be passed by council. Our legal council has reviewed and approved the document. Therefore, I'm seeking council approval of the resolution.
I would so move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Great job. Next, from our fire chief, Chief Anderson, Stryker Power Load System Purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, two of the Trenton ambulances are outfitted with power lift stretchers and power load systems. For the purchase of the new 2023 ambulance, we would need to transfer one of the seven-year-old power load systems to the new ambulance or acquire another unit to install. After inquiring and discussion with Stryker, who is the sole server, sole source provider of these devices, we were offered an opportunity to purchase a 2023 demo power load for a 30% reduced cost of $23,108.13. Also, that number is also comprised of a $1,000 trade-in allowance on the non-power load that is installed in a 2012 ambulance that will be going out of service. Monies for this purchase are available within the 2023-24 fire department budget, in the EMS machinery replacement fund, as well as the fire department, fire equipment fleet replacement fund as listed below.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right, next up, we have Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Beaker, has the Destination Downriver yearly fee.
Thank you, Mayor. Destination Downriver is a collaboration with Downriver Communities and the Southern Wayne County Regional Chamber to market Downriver as a whole to anyone in visiting, living, working, or exploring Downriver for, for a prospective landing place. Destination Downriver has created a website, videocast, and podcast, as well as appearing on the award-winning show Under the Radar. We look forward to the new and exciting ways that Destination Downriver will move the area forward in 2024, and looking to pay the yearly fee of $5,000 paid to Southern Wayne County Regional Chamber.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right, next up, we have from our wastewater treatment plant consultant, Ms. Wilson, purchase of a new F-150 crew cab truck for the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. I'm asking for your approval tonight to purchase a new F-150 crew cab truck.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to receive and place on file the cost, fines, and fees from the Thirty-third District Court due to the city in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-two cents.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, Department Hudson officials. First up, we have here an item from our city administrator for the 2024 Concrete Pavement Repair Program Contract Extension. Mr. Creech.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, you'll, you have the city engineer's recommendation to extend the contract with Dominic Gagliol construction for the 2024 season. So I'm asking to move to approve the extend, extend the contract, Dominic Gagliol Construction. This is really rough for me today, for 2024 Concrete Pavement Repair Program in the best interests of the city.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean.
Yes, sir.
All right, we've got three items now from our city attorney, all three petitions to divide property. The first one we have here, petition to divide property, three zero zero one Marion Road, Faith Bible Presbyterian Church. Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you. This petition to divide the property is for the church to sell a small portion of its property to a residential neighbor, which will help both. The common address of the property is three thousand one Marion Road, Trenton four eight one eight three, and parcel ID is fifty-four oh two one ninety-nine triple zero four dash zero zero zero. And the split and all information is attached to the resolution that's before you, the petition before you. I'd ask you to pass that resolution to oh two four dash two.
I would so move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And next up, I'll keep it with you, Mr. Ackerman here, same petition to combine property, four zero zero five Ponderosa, Jeffrey A. Hulicki.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. This has Exhibit A is incorporated into the resolution, two oh two four dash three, parcel fifty-four oh one eight oh one two two dash zero 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 at four oh oh five Ponderosa. And what this is going to do is it's providing a neighboring residential property purchases additional land for a larger rear yard. And I ask the, I would have you ask the council for approval.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. And lastly, we have the petition to combine property, two six one zero Vreeland, Mr. Jake Nemeth.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is two oh two four dash four for, to combine properties by the petitioner. The parcels are fifty-four dash oh two six oh one, oh oh two seven, three oh three, and fifty-four oh two six oh one, oh oh two eight, three oh four. And this is subject, of course, subject to any partake, and everything of record is all others. And this is a simple, this is a simple petition to incorporate, to combine the two properties for this rear yard, larger rear yard.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have from our city clerk, Ms. Devitt, as an item for election worker compensation.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the city charter per section three point one two, page twelve, compensation of the election personnel shall be determined in advance by council. I am requesting council approval to increase the wages of our election personnel as follows. Early voting inspectors to a hundred and fifty dollars per day, chairpersons to two fifty per day, election day inspectors at two hundred a day. Receiving board are paid an hourly rate of twenty dollars per day, and if needed beyond these wages, fifteen dollars per hour if I needed any election workers to work on an hourly rate.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, next up, from our controller, Ms. Cooper, authorization to sell old printers and copiers.
Hi, good evening. American Office Solutions recently replaced all the printers and copiers throughout our city buildings. They wiped the hard drives and brought them all back to City Hall. So now we are just looking to list these printers for sale. So I am looking for a motion to approve the sale of fifty-five printers and copiers using public, public surplus auctions.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Prueji.
Yes, you say they wiped the hard drives on all the printers?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I'm making sure that there wasn't any data left on the copiers and printers. And then I'm, I didn't realize they had hard drives, but I'm just making sure that's happening. According to you, it has.
Yep, they said that it has been completed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, from our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent, request to purchase a water department service truck.
Thanks, Mayor. Our Water and Sewer Department utilize two service trucks in the fleet. In the event we have multiple water main breaks or other related jobs, we can dispatch two crews at one time. These service trucks carry all necessary tools and equipment required to make the repairs in the field. One of our service trucks is seventeen years old and has been unreliable and needs to be replaced. Our fleet supervisor obtained two, a two-part quote utilizing Gornow Ford's MyDeal contract. The chassis will be purchased through Gornow Ford while the service body will be supplied and installed by Naphide. If approved, it'll take one year to take delivery, at which time the old truck would be sold at auction. Therefore, I'm seeking approval to purchase the water department service truck from Gornow Ford and Naphide in a total amount of eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Kevin. Next up, we have a settlement agreement between the Great Lakes Water Authority and City of Trenton.
On March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, we experienced a water main break on a sixteen-inch water main just south of Sibley Road. This water main is owned by GLWA but is downstream of the city's master meter. Our master meter captured all this excess water usage, so I submitted a claim for reimbursement. After months of back and forth, GLWA has provided a settlement agreement in the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-nine cents, which represents ten point three million gallons of water lost. In order to proceed with the settlement agreement, GLWA has requested a resolution to be passed by council. Our legal counsel has reviewed and approved the document. Therefore, I'm seeking council approval of the resolution.
Oh, it's so moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Great job. Next, from our fire chief, Chief Anderson, Stryker Power Load System Purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, two of the Trenton ambulances are outfitted with power lift stretchers and power load systems. For the purchase of the new twenty twenty-three ambulance, we would need to transfer one of the seven-year-old power load systems to the new ambulance or acquire another unit to install. After inquiring and discussion with Stryker, who is the sole server, sole source provider of these devices, we were offered an opportunity to purchase a twenty twenty-three demo power load for a thirty percent reduced cost of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eight and thirteen cents. Also, that number is also comprised of a thousand-dollar trade-in allowance on the non-power load that is installed in a twenty-twelve ambulance that will be going out of service. Monies for this purchase are available within the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fire department budget in the EMS Machinery Replacement Fund, as well as the Fire Equipment Fleet Replacement Fund as listed below.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next up, we have Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Beaker, has the Destination Downriver yearly fee.
Thank you, Mayor. Destination Downriver is a collaboration with Downriver Communities and the Southern Wayne County Regional Chamber to market Downriver as a whole to anyone in visiting, living, working, or exploring Downriver for, for a prospective landing place. Destination Downriver has created a website, videocast, and podcast, as well as appearing on the award-winning show Under the Radar. We look forward to the new and exciting ways that Destination Downriver will move the area forward in 2024 and looking to pay the yearly fee of five thousand dollars paid to Southern Wayne County Regional Chamber.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. All right, next we have from our wastewater treatment plant consultant, Ms. Willison, purchase of a new F-150 crew cab truck for the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. I'm asking for your approval tonight to purchase a new F-150 crew cab truck for the wastewater treatment plant. We currently have two vehicles we utilize at the wastewater treatment plant on a daily basis to go around the city and to our lift stations. Our current trucks are an F-250, which is built in two thousand fifteen, and an F-150, which is built in two thousand fourteen. I'm requesting your approval to purchase a new F-150 through the Gornow Ford Municipal Government Sales Program. This will replace the F-1, F-150, the two thousand fourteen, which is our oldest vehicle. I'm asking your approval to payment of Gornow Ford for this vehicle in the amount of fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Julie. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any late items tonight?
No, we do not.
Awesome. We'll go to our disbursements and statements in the reports, and I will defer to our mayor pro tem, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pay the disbursements off two million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand and ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Support.
I moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Move to approve the Cultural Commission minutes from December thirtieth, I'm sorry, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, Downtown Development Authority minutes, December fourteenth, Fire and Police Pension Board draft minutes, January seventeenth, and Retirement Healthcare Benefit Plan draft minutes, January seventeenth, all in twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Prueji.
The hour in twenty-four, except for the DDA.
Yeah.
Just for record keeping.
Yep, thanks, Nelson.
Cool. Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, thank you, Councilman. Other council business now. I'll be very, very brief. I just first want to thank the Trenton Rotary and the Trenton Business Association for putting together the State of the City address that I was able to do over lunch for the Rotary Club this morning. I know that they generally, it gets posted on YouTube, and they stream it on the cable channel as well, too. But I just want to give a shout out to them, thanks to all those who were able to come out for that. And in particular, thank you to all the city employees who are the reason that I get to brag about so many cool things happening over the course of the year. So all went very well. And then additionally, I want to thank everyone who was able to come out this past weekend, particularly those who volunteered or worked at the hockey showcase, the ice rink over there. It's always a very fun event, very chaotic at the same time. But, Tim, great job to you and everyone on your team over the course of the weekend, in spite of many obstacles leading up to it for everyone. So that, and then same with the Winter Fest over the course of the weekend. I had great feedback on that. So thank you to all the businesses that participated there, and certainly want to make sure folks keep it out for many more cool things to come, even as soon as this weekend. So other than that, I don't think I have anything else, and tonight we will get started with Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say thank you to all the hard work that Tim and his team did. I was able to volunteer on Friday. It was a very long day. By the time I got home, I think it was almost ten o'clock. But it was great, and it was fun. Really love all the great work that you all do over there. It was so exciting. It was energetic, and it was, it was great. Thank you for all you do on that. I was not able to go to the Winter Fest, unfortunately, on Saturday, but I did see the pictures, and, and I heard some folks talking about it at work, and they had a wonderful time. Last Saturday, we, many of you do not know, but I am a part of the Seroptimus International Trenton and Downriver Group, and we had our biannual human trafficking fundraiser. We had over six hundred and twenty guests. Unfortunately, I do not know how much we raised this year, because currently they are having their meeting right now as we speak. So I'm really excited to see how much we raised, and I think that is it. That's everything.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bonk Crooks?
Yeah, just basically, thanks for doing your State of the City again, Mayor, and keeping everybody abreast of what's going on. I heard it went really well today. I'm sorry I couldn't make it. But also, this weekend in Trenton, you were talking about some cool things, and this Friday night, February ninth, it starts at four o'clock. It's from four to nine in Trenton. They're having a Valentine's Day kind of girls' night out thing, which is kind of cool. It's going to start from down at the ice arena, coming this way down West Road in downtown Trenton. They're doing a kind of a bingo Valentine theme where you stop at the businesses and shop. And a lot of the businesses are, we're all having like giveaways and little prizes and different things for you stopping in all the businesses. You get your bingo card marked, and at the end of it, they're going to give away a beautiful gift basket and stuff from the vintage market down there where it kind of ends downtown. So it's going to be kind of a really cool night, and I hope a lot of people come out. I know my salon is involved in the new Blue Heron that opened up her boutique in my salon a couple months ago, which I'm, I'm really happy to say they're doing very well. You got to meet the ma, she was so happy to meet the mayor last Saturday, and she's just doing well in Trenton, and she loves being in Trenton. So we're happy to have her and happy to have another retail business in Trenton, so I'm really glad for her. So we're going to participate, and I know there's like probably twenty businesses or so that are as well. So I hope everybody comes out and sees everybody and sees what Trenton's all about and what all the businesses have to offer, not only downtown, but also on West Road. So that's it for this weekend, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman. Come one, come all, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
All right, Councilman Benedetti.
Again, Mayor, nice job today at your speech. I was there with Councilman Prueji, and you did, you went through. You highlighted all the important things that all our employees do, all our city officials do, the department heads, everybody else, and I think they appreciate that. I know I do, that you show the city and everybody else what we can do and what we can accomplish, and I will be thankful of that. It didn't last more than an hour and thirty minutes, so we were good.
Had myself on a timer, don't worry.
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Hornbeck?
I, I did have a chance to go to the Winter Fest over the weekend. That was a lot of fun. My kids had a blast and got treats from any place that has treats. So that was really fun. I know the high school won both their games at the showcase, they told me today. And so they were very excited about that, hosting it. Also, the, there was a swim meet in the high school as well and a winter formal, so Trenton was hopping this weekend, which I know for the restaurants is great, because this time of year can often be difficult. But everywhere I went, I had lunch at Roundhouse. I met a lady in from Toledo who came just for those events in downtown Trenton that week. So yeah, it was a great weekend, and I'm looking forward to Friday night, too.
Good.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilwoman. That's very cool to hear, too. Councilman Prueji?
Yes, Mayor, I just as well like to echo the fact that I was in attendance for your State of the City, and I appreciated the way you expanded upon what the city has to offer, what they have done, what our challenges are. You did a very good job detailing that out, and also I'd like to say thanks to Tim and his group for the showcase invitational. I, I saw that somebody from Ottawa came down for the tournament, which was incredible. I just couldn't believe that they flew in for this tournament.
And of course. Out for the senators, right?
Yeah, maybe. Maybe they're trying to get Debrinck it back. Then, of course, the, the Winter Fest was well attended, and it looked like there was a lot of buzz going on, because I was down there. So I just want to thank everybody who was involved with the Winter Fest, and I appreciate those efforts, so, as well as Tim's team. So that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Kibowatton?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Unfortunately, I was out of town this weekend, and I was tied up at work today, so I missed all the fun, but I've heard all about it. So I heard you had a great, great presentation today, Mayor, and, and thank you for, for doing that for the community, keeping everybody abreast of what's going on. And as well as, you know, all the city employees that it takes to put on an event, and I always say this, you know, my appreciation to everybody, because it takes, it takes a village to do a special event or multiple like we had over the weekend. So my hat's off to all of our employees for everything they do every day. So other than that, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman. We'll go to our other elected officials now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
I do. I would like to mention that early voting will begin Saturday, February seventeenth, here at City Hall, and it will go every day from Saturday, February seventeenth through Sunday, February twenty-fifth, from nine AM to five PM. City Hall will be, the city offices will be closed on Monday, February nineteenth, for President's Day, but we will be open for early voting that day, so early voting only. And then our next regular council meeting will be on Tuesday, February twentieth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Assessor, do you have anything for us this evening?
Hi, good evening. I don't have anything to report today. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, and we can hear you, so I'm happy to report that.
Awesome.
All right, take care. Mr. Treasurer, Mr. McCullough?
Yeah, thank you, and I just want to echo what everyone said about your speech. Everything.
It was too long?
There are so many, so many moving parts to this community that creates a quality of life that we enjoy. And so that's a long way of saying thank you to the people that pay the taxes, that allow us to do the things, the services that we provide, the infrastructure that we maintain. And so I want to thank them for having paid their taxes, and as a reminder that if you haven't paid your taxes, we have until February fourteenth, same day as Valentine's Day. You can send your bill in or invoice with a check at the same time you send out your Valentine's wishes. So that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Send your love.
All righty, we'll start calling your tax bills your Valentine's cards, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, do any of our department heads have anything for us this evening? Chief Hawkins?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few quick things of note. As many residents have known, we've entered into an agreement with the South Downriver Dispatch. So I just want to let residents know that if they do call the police station number, it may not answer Trenton Police, but they will say South Downriver Dispatch. They're getting excellent service, along with emergency medical dispatch, but we still have twenty-four-seven service at the police station. There is an officer there. There's always somebody. If you can come on in, make a report, it's always manned. But you may just get a different answer when, when we answer the phone of South Downriver Dispatch. I just want to make people aware of that. Also, you will be seeing some new vehicles around town with the agreement that you approved from Enterprise Fleet Management. We do have a couple silver vehicles. They stick out. There are supervisor vehicles. Those are supervisors driving around the road. But what's important about those, and what really what I wanted to come up here for, is each one of our vehicles has a sticker on the side of the car, and it, it's our badge, and it's two nine sixty-eight, which is the date that our only officer lost his life in the line of duty, Robert Perry, which is coming up this Friday. So our hearts will be heavy thinking about them and their family, and I just wanted to reach out and say that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Chief. Appreciate it. All right, any other department heads have anything this evening? Not seeing any. We'll go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please begin with your name and address. Direct all questions through me, the chair, and please let me your comments to five minutes. We'll go to anyone in person first, and those on the Zoom. Anyone wants to raise hands? Not seeing any. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and supported for adjournment at seven twenty-five PM. There you go.